The time is 6:00 PM and the regular session of, the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Jeff Humphries, pastor of Parkside Baptist Church.
Let's pray together. So Lord, 150 years isn't a long time to you, but it's a long time to us. And Lord, we thank you for the 150 years that you've given this city. We thank you for the leadership that helped to found it and to make a lot of great moments happen in and through this city, Lord, that have impacted not just our state, not just our nation, but our world. And Lord, we thank you for the leaders that you have placed here today for us for such a time as this, that will set the tone for the next 150 years. And we pray that you would use us to continue to bless our city, our state, our nation, and our world, and that you would be proud of the things that we allow you to do through us in this great city of Denison. We love you, we thank you, we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Will you join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight, we have a very special guest. His name is Josh Curtinbach. Josh is a junior at Denison High School, and for the last seven years, he has devoted his birthday month, which is January, as a month of giving back to his community by hosting an annual 4-H book drive. This year, he has chosen the Grayson County Welfare Board and Denison ISD teachers as his recipients. Josh's literacy campaign is close to his heart because of so many children who do not have the ability to read a book anytime they wish. Josh has collected over 20,000 books in seven years. Josh is a very special young man. He is a member of the National Honor Society, a Fellowship of Christian Athletes, he is the Neo-Walladentine Junior Prince, a Grayson County 4-Her. He wears the number nine as a mighty fighting yellow jacket on our varsity football team, and this coming fall, he will be our quarterback. He also runs track and does disc and shot. Josh is a Paul Harris Rotary Fellow and received the Community Service Award for Rotary for his community service. He is a National 4-H Council Literacy Winner, a Bobby Braken Youth Foundation Scholarship Winner, a National Invisalign Scholarship Winner, Texas 4-H Community Service Award Winner, and Texas Prudential Award Winner for his community service work. Josh plans to attend either Oklahoma State University or Texas A&amp;M when he graduates. Go Aggies! His proud mom and dad, Dan and Tina, are right over here, and we are sure happy that your family chose Denison. Josh, this is a very impressive bio for such a young man. I think we see a very bright future for you, whether you play football or not. So, thank you for coming to share with us, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. So my name is Joshua Curtinbach. I am a member of the Grayson County 4-H, junior at Denison High School, a member of the leadership team for our FCA, and also a member of the National Honor Society. And today, I will be talking to y'all about my seventh annual 4-H Book and Stuffed Animal Drive. Unfortunately, the past two years due to COVID, we have not been able to do stuffed animals because, because of COVID, and we just, instead, we are just doing books. Meet my family. I'm a member of four. My mom and dad on the left, and my brother pictured with the OSU hat on the right. He's currently a senior at Oklahoma State University. Again, I'm talking to you guys about my seventh annual book drive. So basically, just how this started is, in fifth grade, one of my classmates was just having trouble reading, and so I gave him a book, and after, week after week, month after month, I just, he came back to me and basically just asked for a new book and just kept doing that repeatedly. And so I decided on my birthday to start a book drive. And every year, we, I have started it on my birthday, and this year, it's gonna last until February 18th. The picture on the right is one of my biggest fans, his name is Major, and he, he is just a big part of what keeps me going in this drive. So why am I having this drive? I'm having this drive to benefit the foster children for the Grayson County Welfare Board, to help Denison ISD teachers give students books to read at home, to spread the need to educate our youth in the literacy education, to keep our children reading and using their imaginations, to encourage parents to read to their children at home, to teach people my age to give back to the community, and to help the power of giving. Last year, I won the National Invisalign Changemaker Scholarship due to this, due to this book drive. And you could see this. This is how it all began in 2015. I created what, what used to be the kindest nights. Whenever I, whenever I started it, we collected, first year, over, just around 589 book and stuffed animals for special needs kids. And now, it's not just special needs kids, we're donating to foster kids in foster homes because, main reason is, my, a couple of my cousins in Oklahoma, they are actually helping me do this drive in Oklahoma, and they are both foster children as well. So that is why I am continuing this. Then and now, the picture on the left is in 2015, when it all started, and the picture on the right was last year, as we collected books and stuffed animals, not as many stuffed animals, but we collected a lot. This is, this is what I collected just whenever I moved to Denison, and this is what basically just kickstarted this drive in Denison, and is just a little spotlight of what was, is to come in Denison. So what do we do with your donations? This past year, I donated to the TEA of Grayson County, a fourth grade teacher at Terrell Elementary, B Mac Intermediate, a Mays Elementary second grade teacher, a pre-K teacher at Terrell Elementary, and past years, I've donated to my elementary school, Collin Powell Elementary, and Grand Prairie ISD, as well as a pre-K teacher at Florence Hill Elementary, which is also another elementary school in Grand Prairie. Throughout 2018 to 2020, I decided to donate my stuffed animals to the Grand Prairie Santa Cop in Grand Prairie. We filled nearly seven full black trash bags, all washed, full of stuffed animals. The Denison story is just getting started. Here's what we have done in Denison so far. We have dropped off boxes not just at Scott Middle School, but every school in Denison. My principal and counselor helped kick off this drive, as well as some members of the FCA leadership team. The, these pictures are just kids that helped me, also helped me keep this drive going. I was in their shoes whenever, whenever I was younger. I was on the sidelines watching older kids play football on the field, and now, these kids are the ones watching me play football on the field. It's just really heartwarming. Drop-off locations are at all Denison ISD libraries, the administration office, the Grayson County Courthouse. For contacts, you can contact me, Josh Curtinbach at Denison High School, Carrie Uber at Scott Middle School, and Brian Eves, the Director of Communications for Denison ISD. I promise that I will lead this project like I will lead on and off the field. Community service is something learned, and I feel an obligation to continue to teach it daily. I just can't do it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, and keep up the good work. We want that story to continue in Denison. Right now, I'm going to invite our police chief, Mike Gudgeel, to come forward, and he has a presentation to make.
David, I appreciate y'all letting me go after Josh. Now, that's a hard act to follow. Anything we could do at the police department, please don't let us know. Okay, honestly. Hi, folks, Mayor, Council. Glad to be in front of you tonight. Big time in our city's history with the sesquest centennial. I'll never get that wrong again after Rebecca got me on the video. But we've done some things at the police department to kind of celebrate that, one of which is the badge I'm wearing tonight. We bought all of our officers badges that, that money was used out of seizure, so we had dope dealers buy us new badges, so we're proud of that. This badge is a pre-1930s badge, so it goes back with some time. In front of you, you should have a challenge coin. On that challenge coin is also a replica of this badge, and on the backside of that is our flag, which represents, the green represents the green grass of Oklahoma, the white is the cotton fields of Texas, the red is the Red River, the black is the Katy Railroad, and the star is Denison. Do y'all know what a challenge coin is? Does everybody know the story of a challenge coin? If you don't, I'm gonna tell you. It started back in World War I, this is the most popular story, where a wealthy lieutenant, a pilot, bought his entire crew a medallion. That medallion was worn in a leather pouch around their neck. He ultimately was shot down, and the Germans got him. Well, they stripped him of all his possessions, except for that medallion. He was lucky enough to escape, but then had to go towards the front. The French caught up with him and thought he was a saboteur. There was one, one person that recognized the medallion, so instead of killing him, they gave him a bottle of wine. He went back to his squadron, and that, and the history says that if you have that challenge coin, and I challenge you, and you can't produce it, you have to buy me a drink. If I do produce it, then he has to buy me a drink. Now, we're not suggesting that our council members produce that coin and buy us any drinks down the road, but that's kind of how it goes. So, it's our honor to be able to give that to you. I hope you enjoy that. We think it's a real special time for the city of Denison, and obviously, our police department celebrating 150 years. I do have a little bit of information in reference to a mystery that we've been working in reference to a time capsule. I don't know if you all have heard about that. We have searched high and low. We put together search parties. Police Department heavily invested in this. Up until last week, we had no idea, until somebody was in our lobby and looked down, and there's a plaque, and that's our time capsule in the lobby of the police department. So we're excited about trying to get into that. It may take some machinery, but we're gonna figure out what's below it. But thank y'all for having us tonight, and enjoy your coin. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Jake. At this time, we have a very special presentation to make. We are, we are extremely fortunate that we work in a city that values their employees, and we are even more fortunate that we recognize those that we value. So if Jack Hayes will join us at the podium, the city manager and I have a presentation to make.
Instead of facing the capsule, I'm gonna face the audience and talk about Jake. So Jake is our 2021 Employee of the Year. He was selected amongst over the 300 employees that the city had at service. Jake has served the city for over six years, and currently serves in the role as utility supervisor. He started with the city as a utility worker. Everybody knows what 2021 provided in all the challenges. Jake stood strong with us through the snowstorm, through management changes, through short staff, which everybody knows about the short staff, everybody's having in America this past year. He has stood strong with us, and has had a great work ethic and a great attitude, so we are thrilled to honor him as our 2021 Employee of the Year.
Right over here. I think Mary wants to get a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, Jake, again. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take what is known as a mayor's privilege, and I'm gonna recognize somebody who has just recently made a major accomplishment in her career. Chris Wallantyne graduated January the 13th, 2022, after completing her Texas Registered Municipal Clerk's Certification. That was a mouthful. It's also quite a, an accomplishment for her to achieve this. She began in 2016 and completed it in 2020. It requires 200 hours of individual home study and online homework, and what this is gonna do for our city is, the professionalism that Chris brings to our city cannot be measured, and we are so very, very proud of her that she put all this effort into achieving this certification. So, Chris, we are very proud of you. Okay, now we have to get to work. At this point in each council meeting, time is set aside so that citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be filled out before we get to this point in our agenda. Ms. Wallantyne, do we have any requests to speak cards?
So the only one we received was from Josh.
Was from Josh? Well, he spoke. He spoke, so, and, and thank you again, Josh. So therefore, we will have no public comments. The consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and receive testimony from the Neighborhood Services Manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 2201 South College Boulevard, and take action. Mr. Lay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you. On January the 4th, 2021, I'm sorry, on January the 4th, 2022, Michael Bedford, Douglas Strange, Kaitlin Strange, and Nathan Vaughn were given notice of violation to repair, demolish the structure at 2201 South College. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 7, Section 13-154, H, N, and O of the Denison Code of Ordinances. Co-compliance officers have worked 28 code violations at this residence over the past five years, many of them coming from complaints from the neighbors. Staff executed administrative search warrant on November the 3rd, 2021, to confirm the unsafe conditions on the interior of the structure. The appraised value of the structure in 2021 was $30,373. Taxes currently owed totaled $1,204.50. There's been no water service at the structure since October of 2021. So this structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. There's substantial damage to the interior of the structure. The structure's not weather-tight. The roof is in poor condition. The foundation is in poor condition. It's not fit for habitation. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe conditions of the property are on file in the Neighborhood Services Office. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. I will add that in the past week, I have spoken to the owner of this property. He has stated that he wishes to tear it down himself. A contractor has come in today to pull a demo permit for that. Staff does believe it's still beneficial to go ahead and order a, to get a demolition order in the case the contractor does not complete the work or do it in a timely manner. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 2201 South College Boulevard a nuisance and unsafe, to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crawley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and receive testimony from the Neighborhood Services Manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 2711 West Walker Street, and take action. Mr. Lay.
So before I get started, just so everyone knows, the yellow arrow in the picture indicates the only building at this complex that we're talking about in the public hearing. On January the 4th, 2022, Xiao Ming Xiao and Xiao Hong Wong were given notice of violation to repair, demolish the northeast structure at 2711 West Walker Street, or the Red Rock Apartments. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 7, Section 13-154, M, N, and O of the Denison Code of Ordinances. Staff previously worked this complex for minimum property standards in January of 2021. The owner has completed some work. The northeast building indicated by the yellow arrow was posted as unsafe in August of 2021. The appraised value of the single building couldn't be obtained. The entire complex was valued at $315,609 last year. Taxes are current. As you can see from the pictures, the roof and the foundation of this are in poor condition. It's not habitable, it's not weather-tight. A record of violations, notices, and unsafe conditions of the property are on file in the Neighborhood Services Office. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 2711 West Walker Street, the northeast building only, a nuisance and unsafe, to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lay. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance allowing for a conditional use permit for an auto repair major facility located at 917 South Armstrong Avenue, case number 2021-123CUP. Mr. Lloyd.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. The property, subject property is located in a corner Armstrong and a hole. As you can see, they're currently operating a auto repair facility there, and they're requesting a conditional use permit to operate that repair facility. The property is within a commercial zoning district, and their proposed business days and hours are gonna be Monday through Friday, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They are within the commercial zoning district, so the conditional use permit is just for the type of business they're doing. The applicant is requesting this conditional use permit and has been in front of the P&amp;Z Board, and they have approved his conditional use permit to move forward to council. And this is what's in front of you today. He has come back, per recommendation from P&amp;Z, and placed some screening, some fencing for the, in the parking lot for the vehicles that are left overnight. There's 30 foot of six-foot wooden fence going along the Armstrong, parallel to Armstrong Street, and then there's another 40 foot, or, excuse me, 40 foot going, on the hole street side. So that was the feedback that P&amp;Z gave him, and so he has submitted this plan to meet that requirement. And so, this is what's in front of you guys today. They are operating right now and have operated in, in, without a conditional use permit or a CO, and they have been notified of the violation, municipal violation and such. So, they have made these corrections, and they present to you this to try to get that CUP.
Questions for Mr. Lloyd.
Has the fence already been built since we discussed this, or is there a time limit that we've discussed with the applicant?
So, no, it has not been built. It's just proposed, and we have not set a time limit at this time.
Any further questions?
The other thing that I saw were that the business hours, you know, were recommended nine to five Monday through Friday. Is that in the CUP as well?
Yes.
We've talked to legal counsel. It needs to be added in the ordinance.
In the ordinances.
For the CUP, so it can be enforced.
Okay.
So we will need to state, when you make the motion, with the hours of operations. It's also been suggested the applicant ask for nine to five, but maybe extending that just a little bit, not to back him into a corner if somebody comes in and it's 5:15 or something like that. So just, that was a recommendation from Ms. Ford as well.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
Brian, you bring, pardon me, you bring up a good point about you getting that specific in the timeline, because we have had issues, not that there's anything specific to this operator with other things over the years, looking back, and it's like, well, we've required landscaping, we required this, that, and the other, and so I do think we ought to have that documented.
Do y'all think 120 days would be fair, or should we extend it out with supply chains the way they are? Or do you have a recommendation from our legal side of what you normally see?
You can give a timeframe, but like you said, with the supply chain issues, like, I know just in other industries, things have been held up for six months, so.
Maybe do a 90-day with a 90-day extension. Check in at 90 days.
Okay.
So is the applicant not here?
No, I did not see him.
Okay. Well, in his application, he stated nine to five were his operating hours, you know, if you wanna.
If he wants to change them, we can always come back and amend the CUP, correct? Or?
You would have to do a full public hearing, and it'd have to go back in front of planning and zoning, and back in front of the city council, but he is.
But it can't be done. Okay. We go with nine to five, since that's what was stated in their application.
I was gonna say, one time we did, we added 30 minutes to both ends. I remember we did that on another one that was similar, you know.
I think that could be appropriate.
Eight-thirty. Five-thirty. I don't think it'll affect neighborhood or businesses, you know.
I'd be comfortable with that.
So is there a motion?
Okay, let's try this. Okay, Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance allowing for a conditional use permit for an auto repair facility, major, located at 917 South Armstrong Avenue.
an auto repair facility, major, located at 917 South Armstrong Avenue, with the hours of Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to five-thirty, with screening and necessary repairs made within 90 days with the possibility of a 90-day extension.
Screening and parking spaces.
Screening and parking spaces. Thank you.
Second.
There was a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You might as well stay there. You're in for the long haul. Item 5D, receive a report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance amending a planned development zoning district to allow for the development of duplexes at 715 West Sears Street, case number 2021-156PD. Mr. Lloyd.
Thank you, counsel. And so this property, the developer is requesting to amend an existing PD to allow for construction of duplexes. The entire site measures approximately three acres. The proposed planned development overlay district complies with the comprehensive plan. This property is seeking an amendment of an existing PD. The current planned development is for industrial manufacturing land use. Amending the PD will create conformity with the adopted comprehensive plan and allow for redevelopment of the currently vacant site. This, at the meeting on December 7th, the Planning and Zoning Commission tabled this item and recommended the addition of parking in front of the duplexes. And that was for the purpose of keeping parking off of Morton Street. And so what they did was put a slip road in that faces Morton Street to allow for that off-street parking. And it provides 20 additional parking spaces along the front of the duplexes on Morton Street. A recommendation at that time is to provide four different facades, significantly different facades. And so what they did was they put in this, as you can see here, they put in the slip road with the additional spaces. And then they kept the alley right of way where it was. So you've got reduced driveways, rear entries on one side and a little bit longer on the other side. They landscaped the front facing Morton Street, put trees in as per the proposed PD. And so in front of you today is their request to approve the PD. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Lloyd.
So these are the pictures of the facades that we're going to see.
Yes, sir. And if you go further a little bit, I think there's a rendering in there. There's a little bit better view of what they proposed.
My biggest concern is Morton Street's one of our main arteries and I don't want, this looks great. So if that's what they're gonna do, then I'm all in on it.
Well, this will be repeated down Morton Street. There'll be these four and then the same four will be repeated again. Council can request that a facade not be repeated along the, that Morton Street. The same, the same eight can be used on Sears, but not repeated along, in the block.
I agree with that. I think there should be eight different facades, uniquely different facades for each side, for the Morton Street side and for the Sears Street side. And I think we could increase that masonry requirement as well. I think will give them a little bit better, better look for the neighborhood.
Yeah, Morton's mainly thoroughfare. I think, you know, for the city, it needs to be something that looks really nice for the long term, right? And I think, I think adding more masonry will make it look better for a longer period of time.
You know, one thought would be, is the developer here?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Nope. Oh, I'm sorry. Back in the corner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, let's hear from the.
Okay, let me, let me open the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you already.
That's okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Are you, you wish to speak? Are you the developer?
So the developer had something come up last.
Okay, so would you, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Jeremy Sias.
Address.
Oh, address, I'm sorry. 115 Crow Road, Sherman, Texas.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, now, now I suggest that you, that you direct your questions again.
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry about that. Well, one thought I was fixing to say when we're talking masonry is, you know, one concern would be the sides as far as being 100%. I'm assuming that's a hardy or smart board.
Hardy is what he was playing ongoing with, yes, sir.
And I know that that's technically an equivalent, but, you know, from a longevity standpoint, you know, if we could take that and wrap that down the sides, that same 50% that you're seeing on the front side, I think from, you know, especially coming down the Morton Street side, that would have a big impact because, you know, a lot of times we do fight staining and things like that down the road. I don't know, that's just one thought off the top of my head, is if we could wrap those, go ahead and bring it down the sides, at least 50% on that, on those big sides, that would help, you know. I don't know what that does to you cost-wise, but.
Well, I, I can't really speak for the cost. He was supposed to be here, he had something come up. The only thing I see design-wise is it adds, adds to the overall width of the duplex. Right now, we're at 40-foot, the lots are 50-foot with five-foot setbacks, so.
Okay.
And it's, it's squeezed in pretty tight right now at 40-foot wide.
Yeah, and that, honestly, I'll be honest, that is a little bit of concern for me too because right now I'm seeing single-car garages. And I think it's rare for any household to have just one car, right?
Yes, sir.
And so what I see happening is, yes, if we're lucky, 50% of them will park, one will park in the garage, one will park behind, and then the other 50% are gonna park on the street, right? Just for convenience. And so that is a concern I have with the single, single-car garage. I know that adding double-car garages to each one is gonna make them wider and it'll mean less duplexes in that tight spot, but I guess.
Greg, can you go back to the, to the overall layout where we can see the air, you know, the plan view?
That one?
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
So I, so when I look at this, I mean, from a developer's standpoint and from a profitability's standpoint, I'd say you want to jam-pack as many people in the square foot as possible, right?
Yes, sir.
But from a city's standpoint, from a visual standpoint, from being a place of choice and a place, you know, someplace visually desirable to live, I don't know if that's our goal necessarily to see, let's try to jam-pack as many people per square foot as possible. So I think the single-car garage is worrying for each one. I think, you know, another worry is the paved alley. It's 20-foot right now. Is a garbage truck gonna be able to get through there with the law and be able to pick up trash through there? That's a concern. Those are, you know, I see the, the extra parking along Morton Street for visitors, but I just, you know, without, with the single-car garages, there's gonna be people parking on Sears Street with Barrett Avenue. Those are the concerns I have with the current design of them and additions to the masonry.
Yeah, I think we would need to see a parking lot along the Sears Street side as well. Otherwise, I think you're gonna have a lot, that's a lot of densities. That's gonna, that could be a lot of cars parked on that street. And who's gonna maintain these, these parking lots, these?
At the, excuse me, at the P&amp;Z last week, the developer agreed to put an HOA on this property.
Okay.
Specifics, I'm not sure. I wish he could be here to answer those things, but he did agree to that.
Well, one thing we would want in the HOA agreement would be, you know, some sort of maintenance agreement with the landscaping. That's gonna be a concern, parking lots are one, landscaping's another. And maybe that's shown in a future slide. Are those, those backdrives, what's the fencing, what's it look like? What am I gonna see when I'm coming down Barrett and I'm looking back to the west? Am I gonna just see all the trashcans and all the vehicles back there? Is there any sort of screening on the sides of that alleyway?
So he is gonna put a six-foot privacy fence up and they're gonna be really narrow backyards.
Okay.
Because they're gonna be going from the center of the duplex to the alleyway and then over to the driveway.
Kind of shotgun.
They're like 10-foot wide, I believe.
And where's that privacy fence gonna go?
They're gonna go in the back of the duplexes from the center of the building, back to the alleyway and jet over to the concrete on each driveway and then back down to the back of the duplex.
So it'll just be a single, single fence going down the middle just to separate the space?
Yes, sir.
Basically, that, that driver will be part of the backyard. If you got a picture of that. Okay. What about, one other idea, since you are the designer, would be the possibility of possibly staggering these, you know? As far as on that front elevation, if you could step them back, even if it's just one or two feet, that way you would have a little bit of depth as you're going down Morton Street. I know you're, I know you're fighting setbacks. I can see it on there, you know.
Yeah, so actually, when we first brought this to, met with the city, we, Bill Medina at the time suggested staggering them. And then when we took it to P&amp;Z, they recommended the slip road up here and then they said we did not need to stagger them.
Okay.
So we lined them all up.
Gotcha.
The developer did agree that he, I mean, he would stagger them if that's what's needed.
If you would have the space, if you cheated it out of, just slide that road down a little bit, gotcha? That's just an idea.
Councilmember Spiegel, they, they were staggered until we requested this parking be put on, on Morton Street and then that's when they.
Straightened up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, do we know, 20-foot wide paved alley, is that gonna be large enough for a garbage truck to go through?
Yes, as long as the trashcans are not in the middle of the road or off of the house, a 20-foot alley is our minimum standard for an alleyway. We have confirmed that. But if they put the trashcan three feet off and, and, you know, we won't be able to control it until it's too late, but if they put that two or three feet off of their backdrive and they put it more in the roadway, then no, the trash truck driver will have to get out and move that can and get back in to pick it up. But 20-foot does meet our minimum.
I could always suggest, instead of running the back fences all the way to the alleyway, he boxes off a screened area for trashcans.
That'd be good.
You know, something like that can be done.
Yeah, I've got a client, we're fighting this, you know, where they just moved into an alley development like this in Allen, Texas. And the problem is, is every one of those green spaces you see between those driveways, she has a recycling can and trashcan and they stay out there pretty regularly, you know, because it's just, it's an alley and so people just leave with the rear-facing, you know, that, so that would be nice. I think the front facades look great. I mean, like J.C. said, I mean, we're heading in the right direction for sure. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good-looking project and be happy to see something happen on that, on that side, you know.
I think the reason that he wanted to get 16 of them is because what he paid for the property.
Sure, understood.
Now, I don't know the specifics of that, but from kind of what he's leading on, that's what he needs to even, you know, be able to make any money at all.
You know, in my opinion, our, our goal is to increase the quality of life and help make this a community of choice and I honestly don't think this does it for that neighborhood. You know, like you said, when we very first started, that they're kind of packed in there, they're only five feet from the property lines. It's just the biggest box you can drop in there. And I don't think in the long run, this is gonna be a quality development for that area. And our downtown area is really growing. We're, we're making great strides and I don't want to see us fall back. And I do worry a little bit with this, this development. I mean, a 10-foot wide green space in your backyard is, I wouldn't say a very high quality of life. That's just my opinion on that. And I do think for the facades, I think it needs to be eight different facades. We don't allow home builders to build the same home on a, on a block, so we shouldn't allow on this project either.
Mayor, I have just a bit of a concern about having a parking lot facing Morton Street. That, we have two main east-west streets. That's Morton and Crawford. I just hate to see us put cars right up next to the street if we don't have to.
And I still would recommend increasing that masonry requirement. I mean, it's, it's up to us to, to shape the future of the city and I think, I think we have to do a little work on this one. I think we need to, to really get it right when it's gonna be 16 duplexes all on one block.
Do we, do we have a motion?
We still have a public hearing, Alvin.
I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Oh, I still do have a public hearing, Alvin. You're, you're exactly right, Chris. That's, that's why she.
Jeremy, have y'all looked at this footprint and looked at 12 or 14 versus 16 pieces of property on this?
Honestly, all I've been told from the developers, he needed 16. Again, I, I kind of wish he was here to speak for that. I don't, I don't really know the financials of the project, unfortunately.
I think, and I'm just speaking for myself, but I think we'd all be more comfortable if there were fewer pieces of property on that block. It just seems like they're shoe-spooned, shoe-spooned in and I have the same concerns that other folks have mentioned about space. And it's really shoe-spooned, it's narrow. I think the facades look good, but I just question having 16 properties on that block.
The reason for that is it's already platted for that number of lots. That, that's why it ended up being that number. So underneath that planned development, it's already, the lot's already platted out.
Okay.
But it was platted.
Yeah, we'd have to replat them.
Yeah, I just, I, I just, going forward, you know, in the past, you know, we've done a lot of this infill and everything, which was good for the city, but I think we're to the point now where we're beyond just trying to pack as many people per square foot as possible. I think we're now looking for higher quality living, not say that, not say duplexes can't be high quality. I don't, I don't mind it, but these concerns that we have, I think we can make, we can elevate it and make it nice. I like that there's an HOA plan because I think if there's plans for landscaping and parking, that that's maintained. I think that's it.
Yeah, he also mentioned at the P&amp;Z that he was gonna irrigate the property. I don't know if that's mentioned anywhere, but.
I think the HOA may have been articulated at P&amp;Z, but I don't think it's part of the application. Is it, Mr. Smith?
No, ma'am. The HOA is not mentioned and it needs to be mentioned in the PD.
So that would, that would certainly need to be included in the PD?
And I think I would feel more comfortable if the developer was here to have the understanding of what we want in that HOA and what we, kind of our desires. So I, I would entertain a motion to table until we can have the developer. If you want, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Is that your motion?
Let's do it.
You're still in a public hearing at this time.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
You all are just kidding me. Okay. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Being none, the public hearing is closed. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mayor, I move to table the ordinance, amending a planned development zoning district for the development of duplexes at 715 West Sears.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of approximately 1.596 acres located east of Bannon Avenue and north of West Coffin Street from the light industrial zoning district and commercial zoning district to SF5, single-family residential zoning district, case number 2021-170Z. Mr. Lloyd.
This is the subject property. It's located in light industrial and commercial right now and is surrounded by single-family. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from light industrial zoning and commercial district to SF5. The proposed, the proposed rezone does comply with the comprehensive plan. As you can see, it, it is definitely, and it sets back off the major thoroughfare, so it's definitely in keeping with the comprehensive plan to move that into SF5 at this time. And I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Lloyd? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Mr. Hawley?
Josh Hawley, 3348 West Stafford Drive, Dennison. Guess I spoke to y'all last month, but I, I think I'm actually talking in, in support of something that makes sense this time. So, the, um, sorry. So, on that deal, to the west and to the north is residential, so across the street's residential. The, to the south and to the east is industrial, but those are accessed by Coffin, which is a rather busy street. Fannin, going north this way, you hardly have any traffic. And so I think it'll help driving down Fannin, looking to the easting, single-family residential to actually, I, I don't think those buildings are very pretty, so I just think it makes sense. So, I think that's it.
Questions for Mr. Hawley?
Do you plan to orient those houses so they'll be along Fannin, the...
Yes, sir.
The front wheel?
Yeah.
Okay. I agree with you. I grew up on South Fannin, so I, those buildings are not very pretty.
No.
So, so Josh, what are you going to do with this, with this street?
I inherited the strip on purchasing, so, you know, it's tough to say. I don't think you're going to put an industrial building back there and so, yeah, I, I, so I, I still feel like it should be residential. I don't necessarily know what to do with the strip, so...
To be determined.
Yes.
Someone have a really long dog run or something.
It's a dog park.
Walking path.
And it's named after Mr. Hander, so...
Further questions for you?
Any further questions for Mr. Hawley? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here waking, wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of approximately 1.596 acres located east of Fannin Avenue and north of West Coffin Street from the light industrial zoning district and commercial zoning district to SF5, single-family residential zoning district.
Second.
There was a motion by Mayor Protem Hender and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5F, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of approximately .1377 acres located at 331 East Chestnut Street from the light industrial zoning district to SF5, single-family residential zoning district, case number 2021-176Z. Mr. Lloyd?
This is the subject property. As you can see, surrounded by single-family. The applicant is requesting a rezone of the subject property from light industrial district to SF5. This, this proposed change does apply, stay in line with our comprehensive plan. I don't think he's here at this time, but I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Lloyd? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of approximately .1377 acres located at 331 East Chestnut Street from the light industrial zoning district to SF5, single-family residential zoning district, case number 2021176Z.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Courtright and a second by Mayor Protem Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5G will be tabled at the request of the council and the developer and will, which will include the public hearing and it will be brought before the council on the next meeting, February the 7th, 2022, at 6 o'clock PM. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on an engineering services agreement with Plumber Inc. for the design of the Waterloo Gravity Sewer Line Phase 1 in the amount of $276,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, mayor and council. This particular sewer line was identified as one of our master plan sewer lines that to be replaced and so this one is phase one of this, of this sewer line and it'll be, it's depicted in the picture, but it basically runs from US 75 down to Waterloo Lake Park and it's approximately 7, 7,730 linear feet of sewer line. Our engineering estimate or engineering design services are $276,000. We do anticipate construction to be approximately $3 million. This is a part of the 2022 CIP plan for the bonds issued this year and funding will also be assisted by the Dennison Development Alliance as well, which will be later in this meeting. We do have the remainder, the remaining phases planned out in the next couple of years in our CIP as well and this will be upsizing the property to allow for growth along 70, or upsize the sewer line that will allow for the growth along 75 in that corridor there. So the sections that we'll be replacing will go from an eight-inch and a 12-inch to a 12-inch and an 18-inch sewer line, so it's, it's increasing the capacity by quite a bit. I will note that in the recommended motion, I failed to change our dollar amount from 271 to 276 and so when, when a, if a motion is made, it'll have to be for $276,000. But I'll be happy to answer any questions on the sewer line.
Questions for Ms. Jones?
Don't worry, Chris corrected your motion, so you're...
Oh, yeah, pointed out a mistake, I didn't have to. All right.
Thank you. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the engineering services agreement with Plumber Inc. for the design of the Waterloo Gravity Sewer Line Phase 1 in the amount of 276,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6B, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on approving the purchase of a dump truck in the amount of $157,000 from East Texas MAC and authorize the city manager to execute all related documents. Ms. Jones?
Good evening again. I'm happy to bring forward a new dump truck for our utilities division. This was a part of the fiscal year 2022 budget request and we have finalized our, our quote with East Texas MAC for $157,000. This will replace our current 10-yard dump truck, which has some design flaws that make it more difficult for staff to, to load the truck as we load it with, with a loader and so we tend to break parts off of it and has to be repaired quite a bit. So it is currently a 2016 dump truck that we use and so this will be a 22 MAC Granite Truck and it will be a 12 to 14-yard truck. The picture is similar to what we will be receiving. We have told East Texas MAC that we were taking this to council tonight for your, for your formal approval and it's a lead time of six to nine months for this, for this particular dump truck. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions for Ms. Jones? Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of the dump truck from East Texas MAC for a total price of $157,000 and authorize the city manager to execute all related documents.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Jones. And, and by the way, thank you, Mr. Lloyd. That was a lot of, of things. Item 6C, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on entering into the agreement with Will Dan to provide a comprehensive water and wastewater rate study and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Pilcher?
Good evening, mayor and council. So for several years, I don't know how to change this thing, the city has been considering the process of utilizing a comprehensive water and wastewater rate study from a qualified firm. So in December of 2021, the city sent out requests for proposals and three bids were received by that deadline. You'll see on this chart here, it was Baker, Tilly, Nugent and Will Dan. Upon receiving the bids, there were selected employees that formed a committee to review these proposals. You'll see the evaluation criteria there and the points possible that the committee utilized. That evaluation criteria, we consulted reference cities within the proposals and Will Dan was selected as the chosen firm for this project. The study was funded in the fiscal year 2022 budget that was approved by council on September 8th of 2021. Will Dan does fall within the budgeted parameters and staff recommends approval of the agreement with Will Dan. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Questions for Ms. Pilcher? Discussion by council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the entering into an agreement with Will Dan for the comprehensive water and wastewater rate study administrative consultant services and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Amber. Item 6D, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution authorizing entering into a project agreement with the Business and Industrial Corporation of Dennison, BICD, Inc., doing business as the Dennison Development Alliance, DDA, regarding debt service payments on certificates of obligations issued by the City of Dennison. Ms. Wagner?
Good evening, mayor and council. City council and the board of directors for DDA have determined to undertake two projects, including demolition and remediation of the former Johns Manville, Manville property as well as the sewer line that Carrie spoke about previously that will serve retail sites located on Highway 75. The project agreement between the city and DDA sets forth the duties and responsibilities of both parties for the implementation and funding of the projects. In June of 2021, as most of you are aware, DDA, Dennison Development Alliance, closed on the 400-acre property formerly known as the Johns Manville Manufacturing Facility after at least 21 years plus of negotiating. The J.M. Eagle facility was once one of the largest employers in Dennison. J.M. Eagle donated the property to DDA, but the cost to remove existing buildings exceeded available cash on hand. DDA has requested to issue bonds under the city umbrella and will enter into a project agreement with the City of Dennison in order to make the remediation of the former Johns Manville property. This agreement also includes payments on the sewer line that will serve retail sites located on Highway 75. If approved, the next steps will be for staff to cause to be published the required notice on two separate occasions in the Herald Democrat and will also post a notice on the city's website as required by law. Staff recommends adopting this resolution that authorizes us to enter into this agreement. I will note that DDA's board, I believe, yes, approved the agreement January 13th, which was last week.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? A discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing entering into a project agreement with the Business and Industrial Corporation of Dennison, Inc., doing business as the Dennison Development Alliance regarding debt service payments on certificates of obligation issued by the City of Dennison.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Protem Hender and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6E, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for demolishing dangerous structures in the city. Ms. Wagner?
Thank you, mayor. This kind of follows up with our agreement here. I just spoke about DDA purchasing or closing the property formerly known as the Johns Manville Manufacturing Facility. DDA has obtained costs for demolition and remediation of this site and would like to move forward. Requesting this evening that council approve the resolution for publication of notice of intent. Again, we will publish this in the newspaper on two separate occasions and the notice will be posted on our website. Request the council then will be made to pass an ordinance to issue those certificates March 21st, 2022. Staff recommends adopting the resolution.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for demolishing dangerous structures in the city.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Protem Hender and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6F, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for water and sewer system improvements. Ms. Wagner?
Yes, thank you. As you all are well aware, capital improvement projects were discussed with council during the 2022 budget process. Requests from council by staff this evening to approve a resolution for publication of notice of intent to fund these capital improvement projects. And of course, the notice again will be published in the newspaper on two separate occasions and will be posted on our website and we're required, and then at that time, once that is completed, we will request council to pass an ordinance authorizing the issuance of those certificates on March 21st, 2022. I will go in a little bit further on this since I had given background on the other, but each year during the budget process, staff brings before council the multi-year capital improvement program. Based on this plan, utility projects under this bond issuance include the Texoma Pump Station, street utilities for Loy Lake Road, New Grayson College Water Tower, Duck Creek Interceptor improvements, Preston Waterline improvements, NTRA, wetland rehabs, generators, water plant filtration, secondary clarifier replacements in the Waterloo Gravity Sewer Line as well as other system improvements. If approved, again, we will post that notice twice in the newspaper once. I mean, we will keep it on the website and then we will have the meeting to pass the ordinance in March. The principal amount of bonds to be issued will not exceed 27.7 million and those bonds will be paid for through water and sewer revenue sources that we set aside for these bonds.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? It's a lot.
It is.
It's a lot.
Hopefully it'll carry it for a while, so she won't ask for more.
Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for water and sewer system improvements.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6G, receive a report, a report, hold a discussion and take action on amending the Dennison Development Alliance fiscal year 2022 budget to add a line item for infrastructure in the amount of $276,000 to fund the engineering cost to design a sewer line serving retail sites on Highway 75. Ms. Wagner?
Yes, thank you again. DDA Board of Directors met and approved their budget for the fiscal year 2022 on August 19th, 2021. Our city council approved their budget on September 7th, 2021. DDA is funded annually through a 4A sales tax, interest and lease income and carryover funds from the same sources. Dennison Development Alliance Board of Directors and staff recommend the approval of this amended budget. This is, of course, to fund the engineering cost designed the sewer line that will serve retail sites on Highway 75. Tony Kai is here to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Mr. Kai?
Mayor and council? You have the budget, we proposed the amended budget in addition to that line item. We've also, under proceeds or revenue, we have the bond proceeds of 4.7 that we've just discussed that will come to our budget. And then we have the expenditure of that money under John Mansville demolition cleanup, which we left blank when we did our budget earlier in the year. And so we've also added 97,800 for the payment of the sewer bonds for this fiscal year. So those are the amendments to our budget.
Questions for Mr. Kai? Discussion from council?
I love seeing Team Dennison at work.
Mr. Kai, thank you for all you and your team do. Mr. Kai, thank you for all you and your team do, along with team Dennison. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the amended Dennison Development Alliance fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Protem Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Thank you, Mr. Kai. Item six H, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a change order to the designing downtown Dennison or D three Phase One contract with Piazza Construction for an increase of five hundred and thirty-one thousand eight dollars and thirty-one cents and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Mr. Atterbury.
It's always good to be last.
Depends on what you bring in before the council.
That's right. Well, Renee was doing so well, she could go ahead and do this one too, if she'd like. It affects her. As you're aware, back in June two thousand twenty, we awarded the construction management at risk contract to Piazza Construction for the D three project. At that time, they went to work getting their subcontractors lined up and getting pricing for the job and priced it out. In January of this year is when we actually started construction on the project. If you will recall, one of the first things that we changed was we changed Houston Street from the old brick pavers to a new concrete street. Well, that was part of this cost. The other part that we didn't anticipate is as we started to excavate down there to put in the huge drainage, uh, coverts that you saw and the water and sewer lines, we hit about eleven foot of hard rock from Crawford all the way up to the top of the hill to Main Street. That was not planned for. The contractors brought in equipment two different times to finally get something big enough that it would actually move the rock, and as Chief Gudjul will tell you, they were knocking the pictures off of his wall, so they were trying to break that rock up to get it out of there. The other thing that we discovered as we were doing that is we found water lines that we didn't know existed that were underneath there that were old. We made the decision to go ahead and replace those water lines while we're there because we certainly don't want to go back in and dig up a new street. So fast forward to today and where we're at, the contractor submitted for a change order for that additional rock excavation. We had the additional lines that we had to put in there, and this cost went above what we had awarded originally, so that's why it's coming back to you as a change order. The cost for this, the cost for the project broken into two different areas, one is utilities, if it comes out of the utility fund for water and sewer, but the drainage and the sidewalk extensions and the new sidewalks that we had to put on Houston as a result of replacing the streets that wasn't planned for is an expense that gets charged to the streetscape and the D three fund. So that's how this will be funded, and the total, as you see, is five hundred and thirty-one thousand eight dollars and thirty-one cents. I will say that our, our construction manager at risk, Piazza, that number started out higher than that, and Joe Piazza worked diligently to get that price down with the contractor. So we actually had a savings, believe it or not, that's hard to say when you're spending a half million dollars, but we did have a savings over what it could have cost.
Questions for Mr. Atterbury? Well, we expected surprises along the way, so.
We're still finding a few.
Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the interlocal agreement with the Dennison Development Alliance to make the debt service, is that right? Yeah, I'm guessing the right one, okay.
It's the wrong one.
No.
H is...
Oh, well, you're right. Mayor, I move to approve a change order for the designing downtown Dennison or D three Phase One contract with Piazza Construction for an increase of five hundred and thirty-one thousand eight dollars and thirty-one cents and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second.
Recommended motion, staff motion.
Okay, I'm backing up here. There was a motion by Mayor Protem Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Pursuant to chapter five, five, one, Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda items as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, section five, five, one, dot zero, seven, one. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Tico Grande LP, cause number twenty twenty-one dash one dash zero, zero, one ED, county court at law, number one, Grayson County, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to section five, five, one, dot zero, eight, eight, seven. The time is seven fifteen and the council is now in executive session.